Hey, Tom, what do you think about the P M Z case recommending that that guy reject our form but recommend our three?
How will it be long?
Yeah, when Matt suggested that, I thought that changed my opinion. I was like, I don't want to go on two too much. But on the other hand, I said he's planning five. Yeah, but we can override, the council can override City Council. I'll go down from two to three. I hesitate to go up to two. But if we do that, the zoning, the zoning demand, the three zones with the mass zone. If we do that, we're just giving them a life. It seemed like a good compromise. Well, I hope it does. Getting people more of their property to use?
I'm not in favor of homeowners saying that their property goes from R one to R three or R one to R two.
So they can have more of their property each year than mine?
That's our will and good for people in my neighborhood. Obviously, we're R one. We shouldn't be where we are. They're not going to sell if they're going to sell. I've talked too much. I know they've talked too much. Bankers are so poor. I've talked to real estate agents as well. Right on our hands. It's not.
In my mind, it is neither this is the right thing to do. I have better information than the average person. Facebook can't lose the loudest doesn't. I get that.
I want to stop the other name. Cassidy Wyden, Wyden, I don't know her name, has had a letter to the editor that she was complimentary of it. The way we go with the virus.
Not us, not council. Yeah, that seemed, that was a stretch for her.
Attention, everybody. We have a public hearing concerning the zoning tax. Is anybody here to speak for or against that? Hearing none. That public hearing is closed. Oh, Brian behind you, same house. Mr. Reese, good to see you.
Yes, sir.
First time I've ever seen you in masks since the bankruptcy.
We were supposed to discuss that this evening.
Oh, yeah, there I am. My mic's off, so.
Yeah, but mine isn't.
Gas bank here. Always got something.
What city was it that passed the law that you're not allowed to wear a mask when you're committing a robbery?
I think we need one of those mayor. I would say that was in Poland.
Oh, gosh, John.
Okay, it's six fifty-five. We have a second public hearing concerning the Adams Putnam Street rezone or its number two thousand twenty dash forty-five. Is anybody here that would like to speak for or against? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed.
Three minutes, John.
Okay.
Mr. Greenow?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Hellman?
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Schindeldecker?
Here.
Mr. Slough?
Here.
Ms. Warnicki?
Here.
Mr. Wilbser?
Present.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance on the moment.
The Pledge of Allegiance, keep applying, all of the United States of America, in a true republic, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Previous council meetings, I will accept a motion to accept. Mr. Slough?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilbser, any discussion? This is for the May fifth public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Now, for the May fifth regular session, the city council minutes. Mr. Slough?
Who for adoption of the regular session of council for dated May fifth, two thousand twenty?
Mr. Palmer, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, if acceptance, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The minutes are accepted. We have no add-on replacements or removals from tonight's agenda. We have no proclamations, no recognitions or retirement resolutions. We have no oral communications. We do have one petition.
Let's see, an Alan vacation request from Eric Bibler of ten twenty Adams Street.
This will be referred to the City Planning Commission and Planning Zone Committee. We have no written communications, reports of municipal officers and municipal departments.
A letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding farmland leases.
Any questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
City income tax monthly collections report for April two thousand twenty.
Any questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Family Police Departmental Activities Report for April two thousand twenty.
Questions or comments, Mr. Wilbser?
Is Paul here? Are we seeing any upticks in any of these, Mayor? It's hard to tell on here since we just have this year's data.
Yeah.
And then we talked about getting that adjusted at some point in time, too.
Yes, so that is currently being worked on, obviously with the transition over into the silent dispatch system. We have seen a slight uptick in some of the petty crimes. Obviously, just people looking to get some extra money and make some bad decisions. But nothing that is unreasonable that we expect to continue long term.
Anything on domestic violence? I noticed in the Corridor, it seems like there's an uptick in domestic violence and child abuse.
Correct, yes. We have also seen an uptick in those calls and obviously we'll see what charges pan out on those. But yes, obviously, when folks are cooped up and wearing on each other's nerves and increased life stresses, we unfortunately have seen an uptick in that. I would like to give kudos to Finley City Schools and some of our other schools who have been very intentional about reaching out to students and doing welfare checks when possible, especially on those individuals that they had concerns about. So I think that will help, but certainly we have seen some of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Russell?
Mayor, I also noticed that there was a big drop in traffic stops in April just from the other times and also half of March. Is that an indication that, was that because we think because people were not driving as much? Or did we take a specific stance of not being as aggressive out there on traffic violations?
So both. So we indicated to our officers that unless there was major concern that they had, like, you know, recklessness or anything like that, to try to avoid having those interactions. But certainly, we also saw a drop in people just being on the road. So I do want to reiterate that certainly if someone is, you know, disobeying the law in an aggressive manner or in a manner that we feel is endangering the public, they're taking action on that. But they were also using some judgment to keep themselves safe as well.
So then, as the driving increases, which obviously has, do we see the P D being, returning back to a little bit more of a proactive stance on this?
Yes, so certainly, obviously, we'll see a natural increase with the overall volume. But we have also begun conversations with P D for them to kind of start going back to some of their usual procedures. Just, you know, again, keeping the safety measures in place, but getting more active in pursuing.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Report to be filed.
Finley Fire Department Activities Report for April two thousand twenty.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Treasury Reconciliation Report for April thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
A letter from City Auditor Jim Stachak regarding Ohio Budgetary Law.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hellman.
Yeah, in reading this letter that is suggested in here that council may be interested in having a committee of the whole meeting, Oliver Stachak has offered to host us in that regard. And I guess I would like to suggest that we take him up on that based on the financial situation for the city, although not desperate by any means, but we ought to have a good understanding of it. And I would like to suggest that we schedule that prior to going through all three readings. Maybe even schedule it for Z. How others feel about that?
Mr. Slough?
If that's the form of the motion, I would second that.
Okay, Mr. Russell?
Jim, doesn't this have to get passed tonight?
Mr. Station?
Yes, the letter, I had requested that this body read it into the record because all the details that you need in order to move forward are in it. But in there, I illustrate the difference in the revenues and the fact that in order for you to be in compliance with Ohio Budgetary Law, you need to pass the legislation deappropriating four million forty thousand four hundred dollars from city income tax and two hundred thousand one hundred dollars from the airport fund tonight. Otherwise, I'll be out of compliance. And my income tax number is different from the income tax number that Andrew Thomashere, City Income Tax Administrator, did put out there. It's about, and I think it's significant and noteworthy, that at this point in time, it's about one point six or one point seven million dollars different.
Mr. Russell?
So Danny and Jim suggested a committee of the whole. I think there's definitely a desire to have further discussions about the financial situation that the city faces. Obviously, we can't do that, have a committee of the whole before we give consideration to this thing tonight. But the way I understood your offer, your desire is to have at some point in time further discussions in a committee of the whole format with council on financial matters. Is that summarizing that correctly?
The letter states that I would be happy to keep council informed either through a committee of the whole or through an appropriations meeting. Appropriations would be traditionally the first stop for the type of information that I'm talking about. And I would defer to the Chair of Appropriations for when it's appropriate to call a committee of the whole. The intent in my letter is to say, you folks need to stay informed. You need to stay up on what's happening and how much it's changing. For example, as I say, as a first quarter adjustment, we are producing, I am projecting the income tax receipts down to twenty-three million nine hundred and forty-five thousand. That's a drop of five point three million. However, again, the income tax minister was projecting a drop of six point six million. This difference, though, the five point three million dollar difference in our income tax directly impacts the general fund by four point two million. And then there are other revenues. For example, motel tax, recreation receipts, local government funds, user fees, interest earnings, things illustrated in the letter, that totaled the amount of the adjustment to the general fund at this time at five million dollars. The, not being an attorney, but being trained in budgetary rules of law and what I'm supposed to do, it's very clear in Ohio revised code that when the receipts are dropping in an amount that exceed your appropriations, I am to file a new certificate with the county. So I'm putting you on notice that I'm filing that certificate tomorrow morning. So to be in compliance, again, you will need to pass the legislative act in front of you. The order is logistical in nature and government accounting is what it is from that aspect. But the state auditors want to make sure that the appropriations are done prior to refunding that revenue. Otherwise, you'll be at risk and will likely get a citation if that discussion is passed, probably about four, five years ago.
Mr. Russell?
Yeah, Jim, is that threshold of like a percentage or what kicks off a threshold that says you've got to do this filing? You know, and we need to pass this tonight versus, let's say, at the next, you know, in a month from now?
That's a great question, and I think the public deserves to know as well as this body. And in the training sessions that you guys have the opportunity to go to that are offered by the state, they discuss this quite a bit. But if this, if any governmental entity, subdivision of the Ohio government cedes their starting cash from January one, which was a carryover balance from the prior year, plus the revenues projected by the fiscal officer, which has been by one penny, I need to file that certificate. You cannot exceed your revenues, pre-expensive, by one penny. Now, the nice thing about that, just real quick, if we're one of the few states in the nation that do that, a lot of it happened because of what happened in Cleveland in the seventies. And because of that, under Ohio law, if your city is operating properly, you can never spend more than you have. Doesn't mean it doesn't hurt. Sometimes you're tough, but you can never spend more than you have. And I give kudos to our predecessors down in the state government that came up with this formula because I think it's phenomenal.
Mr. Wilbser?
Grant, do you think there's sufficient desire to look at a committee of the whole meeting to go over our whole financial situation? Probably sometime. Jim, we've got the, one of the big things coming up here is the filing date that got pushed back to...
July fifteenth.
Thank you, Mayor. I was right there with you. And at that point in time, we'll have a better idea what those are going to look like. Would it be best to wait until after that point in time or is there a better point in time when we might want to get council together and go through this one more time?
I would like to probably, well, so that everybody knows, Councilman Wilbser and I are speaking on a regular basis as well as the mayor. He's well on top of the issues and concerns and he always takes my calls, so thank you for that. And he's rocking that eighties hair that I'm rocking.
Thank you.
So we're happy for that, too. Haven't made it to a barber yet. But I think until we close this month, keeping you informed in that manner has worked very, very well. Once the month is closed, I'm going to be looking to see if I need to make further adjustments all the way down the line throughout the year. Certainly by your mid-year review, that would be, it would be proper if that was a committee of the whole. And if needed before that, I would certainly, the conversations we had, encourage you to do that. But the one other thing I want to mention, since you brought it up, what they're referring to specifically is the individual tax filings. So your income tax comes in withholding, individual, and then business tax receipts. Mr. Thomas projected the business tax receipts down from an original projection, end of last year, of seven million dollars, down to less than two. He's now rounded up slightly to two based on a conversation that was had in the income tax board. But that's still a five million dollar difference in projected business profits tax receipts on the income tax. But the individual tax has historically been a steadfast performer. So the question is, can our small business people, our independent contractors, people who own small retail restaurants, that type of thing, if they can get through this, if they survive this, and that tax stays relatively solid, which it did through most of the recession, then what we've done is, through those rule changes, we've bumped between eight hundred and a million dollars of income tax receipts, in my opinion, forward until that July fifteenth, thereabouts deadline. So your income tax report today says you're down just over six percent. Today, based on actual receipts, we were down just under eleven percent on the whole compared year to year. But if you factor in that tax that's been deferred so far to July of this year, we're off between three and four percent in my estimate, which is a strong position to be in based on where we're at. So if you stay progressive, if you stay aggressive, if you scrutinize the request for the expenditures on a case-by-case basis and keep yourself suppressed to the numbers, you should have a solid foundation getting through this year.
Mr. Russell?
Kim, back to this, what triggers this? Last year, at the end of April, we were down four point seven percent in income tax collection and you didn't file this form. This year, we're down seven percent with, as you stated, the withholdings down forty-four percent from the previous year. And if you just made the withholdings, if you just said, not the withholding, the individual is down forty-four percent. Actually, withholding this is running above two thousand and nineteen, surprisingly, which is testament to the fact that folks are still getting paid. But I'm just wondering why, if a penny is a threshold, it seems like we would have been filing this thing a lot more often. And last year, we started slow, inexplicably slow, and we were scratching our heads, and we didn't do this readjustment. And so what kind of, like, what, I understand the uncertainties, but I just don't, I don't understand why those uncertainties went to the point that says, this year, right now, at this meeting, on three readings, we got to do this or we're not in compliance versus the same situation last year?
Well, I encourage you to look back probably three or four years ago when we did do this. The difference between last year and this year is when I ran the revenue projections throughout the year, which I do. So I normally do them between eight, twelve times a year, depending on what's happening with revenue. For this reason, if necessary, I'll do the more. This year, I expect to do the more. At no point in time last year did your cash carryforward, plus your projected revenues, exceed the amount of money that you had appropriated for the year. Three or four years ago, it did, and we did a deappropriation of the income tax at that time. So this is nothing new to this council since my tenure here. We've done many deappropriations in this body. This year, this month, this moment, based on the projections that I am required to do, the cash receipt, the cash carryover from last year, plus my projected revenues that have been adjusted for the information I know today, exceeds your appropriations in these two particular areas, and we need a deappropriation. That being said, I want to...
Exceeds or doesn't exceed?
It exceeds your, the revenue does not exceed, your appropriation exceeds the revenues that are available. That being said, I want this entire body to know, my goal in projecting revenues, and this is something we talked about quite a bit during the recession, is to be objective, not to be conservative, not to be optimistic, but to be objective. One of the reasons my difference in my revenue is so much different, one point six million dollars higher than the income tax administrators is because I don't have insight to some of the information he's looking at. So I'm using the information. I do have to be objective and project the number. As I get more information, I'll adjust that number, and I may have to come back to you to request more deappropriations. But as this one stands, the airport and the income tax fund are over. But as this one stands, the airport and the income tax fund are overappropriated.
Mr. Wilson.
Jim, thank you for that explanation. It's a, it's a good question, Grant, and well founded. I would encourage if anybody else on council has questions about this, because we do have to pass it tonight, it's a large amount of money. It's unusual. We haven't done it for four years.
Three, four years.
So if you have any questions about this whatsoever, please ask them now. I guess you have another opportunity when we get to the legislation itself, but since we're in the middle of this discussion, I would encourage it at this time.
Hearing none. Letter to be filed.
Finley Municipal Court Activities Report for April 2020.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Director Matt Verdony regarding City of Finley Revolving Loan Fund Request, Request for Appropriation.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell.
Yeah, Matt, I, we, we talked earlier about this request, and I know this is something that we want to get done today. If you, you want to provide us some background and some insight into what this is about and why it needs to happen tonight?
This is a micro enterprise revolving loan fund for the firm, and they've requested $35,000 in working capital. And this is in response to the COVID-19 being shut down. And it's, it's important that the business owner gets the money as quickly as possible rather than having to wait six weeks to have the three readings through city council. The revolving loan fund is money that originates from HUD and then moves to the state and then onto the City of Finley. And regional planning, we administer that, and those funds are used for small businesses in our community.
Mr. Homan.
I was going to ask a similar question to this. Regarding that, are you concerned that this opens up Pandora's box and that there will be hundreds of companies that are in a similar situation and may need or want help?
No, in fact, I've been working with the mayor, the auditor, in my late, and the mayor has a press release where we are rolling out a COVID-19 type loan for small businesses in the City of Finley.
Excellent.
And it's our hope that many businesses take advantage of it.
Any other questions? Resources in the count?
There are resources, and we're looking at a smaller loan type situation. I'll let the mayor speak more about it, but we have the money and we hope that local businesses utilize it.
Great, good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Russell.
So specifically, is revolving loan fund strictly limited to businesses within the city or do we act as the agent for economy-wide region on that?
There is also a county revolving loan fund, and we are presenting them with a, they can do loans in the county and in the city, but the city cannot loan money outside of the City of Finley.
Thank you. Ms. Mayor.
Since the topic's been brought up, I'll just go ahead and talk a little bit about it. So as Matt alluded to, we have been working together over the last couple of weeks conglomerate with the Alliance and a number of business leaders have reached out and said, you know, what can we come together to do to make sure we're supporting especially the small businesses that are struggling in our community? And one of the ideas that came out of those discussions was, you know, we have the pot of money in the revolving loan fund that is specifically, you know, there to be utilized to encourage investment in our community and retention of businesses. And it's many times underutilized just because of either lack of knowledge on its availability, the cumbersomeness of the application, or just because, you know, businesses don't have the resources to be able to put it together and submit. And so what we did, and what I'm proud to announce, the revolving loan fund board approved this morning, is we approached them with the idea of doing a streamlined application focused on loans up to $10,000, so where typically the revolving loan fund would not consider loans under $5,000. So our goal is to use the, not the full pot of money, but just for your reference, the City of Finley Revolving Loan Fund currently has about $650,000 in it. And so what we want to do is push that out to businesses where they can apply for up to $10,000, interest-free for six months. They are no greater than five-year terms with the intent that they are catalytic investments into our community. So it would be primarily focused on working capital. Typically, we recognize that businesses, as they are starting up, are going to have to make either adjustments to their environment to comply with the social distancing, they're going to have to buy additional cleaning supplies, they're going to have to do a variety of things while the revenue is still not catching up with the investment that they are making. And so we recognize that there are federal and state programs that are helping folks, but that we can do a little bit more to make sure that they have that working capital to be able to get through this tough situation. So that will, that application is actually going to be available starting tomorrow through Hancock Regional Planning. I have a, actually, when I was sitting here during our public hearings, I was sending that out as we finalized the details today following the 10:00 AM meeting. And I hope that a lot of businesses take advantage of that. Additionally, we, just again, talking about kind of how we're wrapping around our businesses, and I'll talk a little bit later about kind of the residential side or citizen side, but we're also going to be following up with anybody who submits economic development and is going to be reaching out to them to kind of come alongside and sit down and say, hey, we're happy to help you put together your cash flow plan, and hey, here are some resources available from the state, or don't forget to call your utility company and ask if you can get a discount. All of those different things that especially in small businesses, when it may be, you know, someone who doesn't, isn't a business expert, but is running a business, and we want them to be successful, we want to come alongside them and give them as much support as possible. So that is, so you will probably have many more revolving loan fund requests, and we would ask that you act as quickly as possible on those. Depending the number of them, I would even, you know, bring it forward to say that we call a special meeting if needed. Again, time is of the essence when these businesses are making these decisions to continue to operate in our community. So excited, I think it's a great way for us to set ourselves apart and to come alongside our businesses. And by doing that, we also have that respect on our citizens that that's keeping employed and providing opportunity to and creating sales tax revenue and creating income tax revenue, continuing to bolster our economy through this situation. Any questions on that?
Just a quick FYI, Ms. Warnke sits on the revolving loan fund, as does the mayor, the, the auditor, and so we do have representative on that. She books in all matters and can, and you'll see tonight, there's a report from the last one that she submitted. So it sounds like you're going to be busy, Doug.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Hearing none. Report to be filed, or letter answered.
Summary Financial Report as of April 30th, 2020.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Letter from Safety Director Paul Schmelzer regarding the lane light project.
Questions or comments? Mr. Slapp.
Yes, I have two questions. The first is for Mr. Thomas. Are there any signs or notifications to the public that the streetlights are not working the lights for the crossing?
Well, the, the problem is the lights are not always not working. The majority of the time, the lights are working, it's just on occasions when it's not.
So... Doesn't always work, or I...
Currently, there's not one that out there that now know. It is still described as a crosswalk, it still is a legal crosswalk. Even if the lights are working properly, you know, there still needs to be some amount of, you know, you still should look before you walk out in the street. Just because the light you're supposed to flash doesn't mean you should just walk out the street. So there should be, you know, some personal judgment there whether they work or not, but the problem is sometimes they work, sometimes they don't.
Okay, okay. The second question is for Mr. Rasmussen. Don, is there any kind of liability with regards to this issue? If somebody would walk out of the, into the intersection and get hit by a vehicle and sustain any injuries, what's the city's liability for something like that, if any?
It'd be very difficult to do it on a timing basis, and, but that's why, exactly why we want to enter into the settlement agreement. We have about $40,000 of retainage, of which we're going to take 15,000. And our people are going to actually install the lights, script, lane light, folks verifying everything. So at that point, it'll be just lane light, and if they're not working at that point, it's lane light. So we've kind of narrowed it down that way and hope to get the settlement agreement executed.
Mayor Mire.
Thank you, sir.
They, they touched on it a little bit, so I just want to reiterate kind of the point is that they are still legal crosswalks. And so even without the operations of the lights, they're legal crosswalks, so that's, the liability is kind of interesting there. I just want to remind folks, and I know we also have some new members, they were not working for a while, they weren't working too frequently, and the people weren't ignoring them. The reason that this has been an ongoing issue, as the letter kind of describes, is that there was conflict between whose responsibility it was, and we finally said, we're done, arguing with everyone, we're all going to take a piece of this pie and just get it fixed. And so I just want to mention that. So there's not any signage out there right now, they have been working consistently. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we had the camera out watching them, we're not able to actually see any issues. It's like the, the cookies that disappear when no one is around. But so we're, we're keeping a close eye on it still, and our team has done a great job of kind of tweaking to make sure that they are working, but we're excited to get this resolved and know. And, and after this, if they don't work, then we'll be going back and saying, let's re-go to the drawing board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Homan.
If I, if I might, and Mayor, maybe you can help answer this. And Don, if, if the system doesn't work and we've got $40,000 retained, why are we only keeping 15,000?
Because that is the amount that it's going to cost to repair it. Very pleasant.
Okay. I'll take that as an answer.
Mr. Wilson.
When I saw this letter, I, Brian and I chuckled just a little bit because I know we've been going on and on about this for some time. I'm glad we came to a resolution to it. And you're right, Mayor, this was always Paul's response. It's a legal crossing, right? The lines are on there, so if somebody gets cut off and gets killed there, it's still the person driving the car's fault because the air makes... Although that doesn't make us all feel that much better, we know. I'll ask this question one more time, I asked this before. There's a crossing just north of the bridge that didn't, never had the lights installed. Are we going to take those lines out or are we going to install the lights?
I'll let Brian touch on that one.
Mr. Thomas.
At, at this point, we are not planning on installing lights there. Now, depending on what happens with development on that side of the river, it may at that point in time become a good place to have another crosswalk. So at that point in time, we would reevaluate it, maybe do something else there.
So the thought is just go ahead and leave it as is, not take it out, and not spend, put the extra money in for the lights because of potential building down the road?
Correct.
Okay. Understood? Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding Madison and Monroe Sewer Replacements Project Number 35691700.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding 2020 Annual Sewer Televising Program Project Number 35600100.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell. I'll let Don go. Mr. Denny Hill.
Thank you. Brian, this would be a question for you, I think, regarding this telescoping of the sewers. Is this a project that could be postponed if we're in the mood or mode to save 680,000? And then listen to what our auditor has said.
This is an annual project that we've been doing every year. We did increase the amount this year because I know there's an area, a part of town where we have problems with inflow and infiltration in the sewer, we get stormwater coming in. We are going to have to do something in that area to take care of that. I've got a draft reported in EPA now that they're reviewing. So we threw that full area in there to be cameras, knowing that we were going to have to do something anyway, and we were hoping that we could get economy to scale, so, you know, we can get it done cheaper if we've got more of it being cameraed. We did have, the estimate in the capital plan was, I believe, $750,000, so it did come in quite a bit below the estimate. Normally, in the past couple of years, we've also come in below the estimate, and I've still asked for the full amount so that we could add extra to get it done. I'm not doing that this year, I'm just asking for the 600, if we need to get done what we need to get done. There's also been some concerns or some questions the last couple of years from some council members about how long it's going to take to get all of the sewer's televised. That's why we started contracting some of this out. This will decrease that amount quite a bit because we'll be getting a large chunk of town done all at once. So I would still like to see it move forward. It will benefit us in the future, but ultimately, you, it's up, it's up to how you guys want to vote.
Mr. Russell.
Denny, your, your comments were sort of on the lines where I, I was going to go with, I, I will say that this is one of those preventative maintenance type efforts that if, if you don't do, you're going to, what's going to break is the things, are the things that this is going to find, and they're going to break at the most inconvenient time. And, and, and so there is a, a, a real preventative maintenance benefit of, of doing this and doing this aggressively. I was wondering, this is one question, though, is, is, is the, is it worth doing the alternate sections, is it in light of, in light of the financial conditions, or is it, or is the pricing just so good that, and, and, and what we're going to gain on it, that you make the take? And, and it's, there's no right or wrong answer, I'm just wondering what the, what the thought process was. And then also, do you have an idea of what kind of linear footage or mileage or whatever, what's your unit of measure that we're actually going to accomplish with this?
I don't off the top of my head. This is not something that I'm asking to be passed tonight, it doesn't have to be passed tonight. If you want, I can go back and look at the alternatives and figure out what that value would be, what that savings would be if we, if we reduced it, to see how much that would reduce to 680. You know, I was looking at 680 versus 700 and thought that was a good not, not spend, but we can also look at, you know, the alternates and see if, if you don't want to do those, we can, you know, cut some of it off and get that a little bit cheaper, but that's fine. I can come back at the next meeting and tell you what that is.
Mr. Wilson.
Brian, don't we have our own television truck to do this?
We do have our own truck, and we have sewer maintenance guys that do that when they're not doing other things.
Right.
So they're not out there all the time. The big benefit with this is, these are people that this is all they do, they do it every day.
Sure, and they get a lot done in a short time.
They, they get a lot more done in the day than our guys. Our guys do a great job, but still, they, they know all the ins and outs, they know the tricks. They know, okay, if you do this, you can do this, and they get, they can get set up faster just because they're used to doing it so much repeatedly over and over again.
My second question is then, so if we scope all this stuff this year, these would more likely be for projects, if we found problems, projects for...
It would be projects for '21, '22, '23, depending on how much, how much problems we find. I mean, this is how we figure out which ones we have to do for lining, for the lining problem. We'll find out ones that'll have to be replaced. We'll find out, we may find out there's people with some pumps and stuff connected depending on when they televise it, we'll know if we have to get those out. So yeah, this will be for, leading up for projects in the future.
Would it make sense as one of your alternatives to look at using our guys to do the place, the areas that you're concerned about? that you're concerned about, that you mentioned when you were answering Grant's question, a little cheaper, use our equipment, use our people? Six hundred and eighty thousand, we could hire some great interns to get that done, I'm kidding, I know you wouldn't do that, but you see my point?
I can see your point. The area that I'm looking at is pretty much, I'm trying to, I'll try to outline it, so you can get a picture of it. Blanchard Avenue on the north, Main Street on the west, pretty much that whole quadrant. So it is a large area, we can use our guys, but because these guys do it faster, you know, they probably, with everything else they have also going on, I don't know that they'd be able to get it all done this year.
Fair enough, thank you.
Mr. Station. I'm sorry, any more questions for Brian? Mr. Station.
Real quick, I want to take advantage of this opportunity with regard to some of the things Brian's saying. First off, I want you to take a moment and think about what the people in our sewer department deal with, day in and day out, and even without COVID, that job's a tough job, with a lot of respect for those folks. But this, this is strategic, it's important in a sense, certainly it's your job to determine how much money should be spent. But I want to take an opportunity to tell you what you're missing is here, is you're missing some guideposts, some guardrails, plus a word used in the strategic planning plan. You're missing guidelines that you folks need to help prioritize where your capital dollars and where your unappropriated funds should be spent, and you do not have those guidelines. And I can tell you, and we've talked about it over and over again, during the recession, communities around this country spend a lot of time coming up with best practices for establishing and prioritizing capital guidelines for questions that you're asking tonight. And I think that's a great gap in what we have missing, and it's an important aspect that you need to consider. So food for thought.
Mayor Mearon.
I was just going to mention that Brian and I actually spoke earlier today about this, and how it would be beneficial that we share, obviously, we have a large binder that's gone through at budget time, and then we don't necessarily always follow back up with it. There obviously is a capital improvement plan, a five-year plan for the water and sewer fund. And so I think it would be beneficial that as we move this forward, we can share that back out with you all, and kind of show what our plan is, as well as how that compares to the fund's revenue, and what we look at that. I know I mentioned at the last council meeting, and we're still working on it, to update right now the administration. We look at the revenue and expenses for about three-year period, we want to get that out to you guys in a little bit more of a simplified form for a five-year period, so that we have that big picture in look. I know that over the last couple years, you've done a good job with doing this capital plan, and so we are looking currently, reevaluating that. Obviously, we made that initial one point four million dollar, kind of first cut off the top of the hair of the capital budget, but are continuing to evaluate how that can be ratcheted back as needed. So we will make sure that we get that to you guys for the next council meeting. Just sharing those documents again, so we can look at the whole picture on how this piece has been planned into the puzzle, and how it's important that, yes, certainly, again, I echo Brian's comments, if we want to hold on this, that's fine, but it's also, we have to also make sure that we are not holding off now on something that could shoot us in the foot down the road.
Mr. Green.
I think Brian mentioned a very important thing on this, and that's the INI on this, because the INI, which is inflow and infiltration, has a lot to do with overflows, and I believe that the city now is, has to cut out with their, almost all of their overflows, so this will help with the EPA's, I don't know, mandates the word, but this will help with their plan to eliminate also some of these overflows that we have.
And one thing just to mention, that when we talk about the storm sewer overflow, and I'm not an expert, so I'll let Brian throw something at me if I start saying things that are incorrect, but what we end up seeing from a citizen impact perspective, is these folks who may have a sump pump or other ties in their home, will get that back up into their basement. So we know a couple areas where we get calls, even without flooding vents, in different parts of the community, where people call saying, I'm getting water, what did you guys do? And there's nothing we did, it's just that infiltration is starting to occur in their pipes, and then they are seeing the impact in their homes. So that's just another thing to keep in mind, this is not just, hey, it gets water in the street, it impacts some people's homes as well.
Any other questions? Mayor None, letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding Water Pollution Control Center press repairs.
Questions or comments? Mr. Wobser.
Brian, your first sentence, I think, was incomplete, just says, one of the presses of the Water Pollution Patrol Center, I think that was, is broke? What happened to it? Is it, I'm just interested in what happened?
One of the rollers broke, and that damaged the belt, so we need to replace two rollers and the belt. I'm, this is a little different, I'm not asking for this to come out of the sewer fund, there's a restricted recount that's set up to replace certain items with the plant. The reason that I'm asking for this to come out of that fund instead of the general fund is, the plant does have barely, but they do have enough in their operating budget to replace this if they need to, but that's going to take, that's going to take the rest of our R and M money for the rest of the year. Odds are, something's going to break in the remainder of the year, we're only in May. If we do that, and something happens and breaks later, if it's not on the list, I can't use this, this fund, so I'd have to come back here and ask for more, for more money. So it made more sense to, hey, we can use this, this is what this account was set up for. In all reality, and I'm sure Jim would admit, we probably don't use this fund as much as we probably should, but we can use this now, that'll free up other money, you know, that's what it's there for.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out, there is, and I did put in my letter, probably shouldn't have, they have four presses, they need to operate three, so this is a spare, but on their quote, from the time they order it, it's going to take ten weeks to get the parts. So I talked to them, if it takes three readings, we, we'll make do, but just remember, that's a month and a half, and then I've got another two and a half months until I get parts, so that would be four months to get it fixed, so I did want to mention that.
Enough said.
Any other questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding ODOT aviation grant, airport beacon and Linsaw project number three five two eight four six zero zero.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mearon regarding U.S. Department of Justice coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding salt farm structure project number three one nine seven two nine zero zero.
Questions or comments? Mr. Russell.
Brian, thank you. Have a, if you want to explain the whole scheme on this.
Okay. I didn't know I was scheming, but okay.
Start with, what's a salt farm?
This, this letter's kind of tied in to two other letters later on, so if it's okay, I'll go try to cover all that, I'm assuming that's what you meant by the scheme. I'm sure you've all heard, our tax revenue's not coming in the way we like it to. So because of that, that also affects the capital fund and how the money's coming in, into the capital fund. There's the County Road two thirty-six project, that we have ODOT grant money for, that's another tap project, that's on there. And I should have had that on for the last meeting to give you the heads up, but I didn't realize, that is also on the same timeframe as the Blanchard and Lincoln project. So I have to have signed contracts to ODOT by the end of the month, to keep everything moving. If things don't keep moving, they're going to pull the grant money from us. So I do apologize, I should have given that, you heads up last meeting, I didn't realize it was the same schedule. With the revenue and the way it's coming in, I have enough capital funds for the Blanchard and Lincoln, which we need to get approved, which is up for its third reading. I'm short about two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I think it was, on the two thirty-six project. So what I was proposing is, since there was some concern about the location of the salt farm with what we were proposing, it's kind of on hold. We already appropriated money for the building, so what I'm suggesting or asking is that we deappropriate a portion of that. Now, when that was appropriated, it came from the general fund, not the capital fund, so that money does not go back to the capital fund, it goes back to the general fund. And then later on, what I'm asking with the two thirty-six project, is to be allowed to use two hundred and seventy-five thousand of the five hundred and twenty-two thousand to go towards that, so that that money from the general fund, plus what I have left in the capital fund, gives me enough for our share of that project. And then the next letter with the street preventative maintenance and the sidewalk programs there, I'm asking for an additional one hundred thousand of that to go into the street, the street maintenance program. That, that's the project that the street guys do, the street department, where they go around and they fix curb, fix potholes, they redo streets, they take their alley money out of there, and they do curb, they do sidewalk. What I tried to do with that project is get them some money as the year goes through, so I'm not tying up all of it at once. They currently have about seventy thousand dollars left. With the way I have projects lined up now, my May allocation and probably the majority of my June allocation is going to have to be used for the asphalt, for the engineering street paving that we bid out every year. So I'm not going to be able to get them any additional money till the end of July, beginning of August, at the earliest. They will have blown through that way before that. So I'm asking that I can use some of that money to give them some, so that they can carry forward. That decision is completely up to you guys, I mean, I've talked to the street guys about it, they can cut back, when they hit the end, they can just hit the end. But, you know, getting funds July, August, you know, September, October, the weather starts to change. So I would like to point out that with the way, with what I'm proposing in those three letters, we'll be returning five hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to the general fund, and then I'm asking to use three hundred and seventy-five thousand of that for those other projects. So that will still be a net gain in the general fund, I thought I put it in here somewhere, one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. So that'll let those projects keep moving, that will get some extra money back into the general fund that we didn't have in there at the beginning of the year. It's not going to fund the department for six months, but it is something that's in there, so that will help. So it's kind of trying to work out a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Other questions? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding ODOT fiscal year 2020 resurfacing project number three two eight eight four five zero zero, and, County Road two thirty-six dash zero point zero zero, PID one zero zero one eight four.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding 2020 street preventive maintenance project number three two eight zero zero two zero zero, and 2020 sidewalk accessible ramps, project number three two eight zero one seven zero zero.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
A letter from Service Director Brian Thomas regarding rehabilitate taxiway eight, taxiway eight four eight six, project number three five two nine three four zero zero.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed. Committee reports.
Strategic Planning Committee met on May fifth, 2020, to discuss the scope of work for Baker Tilly. City Auditor Stajak moved to approve the scope of work and questions, seconded by Councilman Palmer. Those in favor were Councilman Palmer, City Auditor Stajak, Councilman Wobser. Against were Councilman Hellman, Mayor Mearon, Councilman Russell, Councilman Schundeldecker. Motion stopped.
Mr. Wobser.
I'd like to take a second just to give a little additional color to the rest of council about this committee report, because it does have far-reaching ramifications for the Strategic Planning Committee. The discussion was all on the second page of the report that you have in front of you, and this was a scope of work that was outlined by the mayor, and the auditor, and myself, to start the basic strategic planning committee, which was focused on the financial aspects of strategic planning within the city. We had gone back, the three of us, the auditor, and the mayor, and myself, to scale this back, to get it to a point where we thought it would be palatable, given the fact that we're in a down situation in our budget. And at the time of this meeting, we expected this to come in somewhere between twenty-five and forty thousand dollars. What we didn't know was, less than twenty-four hours later, that Baker Tilly came back and told us that this scope of work, they would charge us fifteen thousand dollars to get this done. And the importance of this, I'm not going to go on about, it's, this is the first step in us getting the city moving in the right direction for a strategic plan, as Jim talked about today, where we would know what, it would help us know what to do when it comes with long-term planning for the water department, sewer department, et cetera. And we can get this done for fifteen thousand dollars. So as we stand today, the Strategic Planning Committee is essentially done, there may be some things that would come up that would look to fall under the scope of this, but I don't see much where it would go, most of it would most likely fall into appropriation. So with that, and knowing that we have the cost to get this done, and the importance of it, I would like to make a motion of this committee, or the whole, or the council, that we accept the offer from Baker Tilly, and pass this motion to engage Baker Tilly to get this scope of work completed, to start us and keep the strategic planning moving forward.
I'm going to have to call, point of order, just a second. We're basically approving a committee report. If you're looking to amend the committee report, I'm going to have to find out if that's allowable under...
I'm not looking to do that.
Second, if it's, if it's a separate motion outside of the committee report, that would be something different. I guess I defer that the, the matter in front of us right now is the committee report. I think your motion would have to come either in new business, right, or possibly old business, because we're discussing something that, but I defer to our law director, if I'm correct or not.
Correct.
Sorry, I'm not saying what you're doing can't be accomplished, I'm just not sure it can be accomplished during discussion of a committee report.
Good enough, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Russell.
Move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. Palmer, all those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. Committee report is accepted.
Revolving Loan Fund Board held a virtual meeting on May first, 2020. The owner of the Fern Restaurant was applying for a thirty-five thousand dollar worth of capital loan. The loan was approved by the board.
Just a note, this does not require any action by council in the form of a committee report, this is for information only. Denise and I are looking on where this should be put in the agenda, the next item is similar, so you might see this in written communication or under this, so stay tuned, but that's just information only, so no action is required.
Downtown Finley Improvement District held a Zoom meeting on May sixth, 2020.
Thank you.
The Planning and Zoning Committee meeting minutes to rezone Midland Avenue, parcel number six one zero 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 three three zero zero two zero zero, from R2 single-family medium-density to R4 duplex high-density residential district. We recommend canceling the request.
Mr. Russell.
Move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. Schundeldecker. All those in favor accepting the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Committee report is accepted. Legislation.
Third reading for ordinance 2020 forty-five, and ordinance amendment chapter eleven hundred ed sack of the classified ordinances of the city of Finley, Ohio.
of the codified ordinances of the city of Finley, Ohio, known as zoning code by rezoning the following described property, referred to as 701-807 Adams Street, as well as 70714 Putnam Street rezoned, which previously was zone M2 multiple-family residential district to R4 duplex-tripleplex high-density residential district.
Mr. Slough.
I would move for adoption of ordinance 2020-045.
Second, Mr. Palmer. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance 2020-046, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Slough.
I would move for adoption of ordinance 2020-046.
Second, Mr. Haas. Any discussion? Mr. Wilson.
Mayor, have we gotten any more feedback from the public on this project?
No, we have not.
Zero?
Not recently.
Okay. Yes, any further things to worry about?
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Well, I am opposed to this project, I have been from the very beginning, but I also realized that it's probably going to pass, so I'm not going to try to block it in that way, but I was very disappointed last fall when this was approved, and it was an effort to remove the emergency status to at least give the public, and you can call it 50-50, 51-49, whatever you want to call it, but there's certainly considerable opposition to it from the public. We chose not to eliminate the emergency status, thus providing or denying opportunity for the public to perhaps mount a referendum. I realize in this situation with the virus and so forth, the odds of a referendum being mounted and sufficient votes to place it on the ballot would be slim and none. Nevertheless, I think this opportunity ought to be presented, and I would move to amend the legislation to remove all, all references to emergency status.
Your motion dies to lack of a second.
I knew it would.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Nay.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Nay.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Sufficient ayes, the ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-051, and ordinance authorizing the service director of the city of Finley, Ohio, to authorize for bids and enter into a lease agreement or agreements to farm approximately 181 acres in the vicinity of the airport, approximately 64 acres in the vicinity of the reservoirs, and approximately 23 acres at the Cardlin Street location, all owned by the city of Finley, by the city and declared an emergency.
Mr. Hellman.
I have a question regarding this, since this is a lease, maybe it's a bribe, lease arrangement for farming this land, is there any need to expedite this approval? This is three readings, and I have it done, and it's June, okay?
No, that's fine. This is starting for 2021.
Oh, all right. I did not pick that up, I'm sorry.
Recently, you did pass one allowing us to rebid the, and permit the, excuse me, the farmland at the airport. That was because we had a problem with the previous renter not paying the rent. So we did that just for one year, so that's for 2020. That's already been done, he signed that, I think he was claiming it last week. But we wanted to keep it on the same cycle with the rest of the farmland, so we're bidding it all at the same time.
Good.
So that's just for 2020, this lets us bid this year for 21, 22, 23.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
First reading for ordinance 2020-052, and ordinance deappropriating funds and declared an emergency.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Mr. Russell.
Move that state, council statutes rules be suspended, ordinance 2020-052 be given a second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
You guys have it, the rules of council been suspended, and the clerk will give the ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordnance 2020-052, ordinance 2020-052.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2020-052.
Mr. Wilson, second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Significant, enough ayes.
Spit it out, Jim.
The ordinance is adopted.
Ordnance 2020-053, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Ms. Warnicki.
I'd like to move that we suspend the rules of council, give ordinance 2020-053 its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Upstand.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
If you have enough ayes, the ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-2020-054, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2020-055, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2020-056, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance 2020-057, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move that council statutes rules be suspended, ordinance 2020-057 be given a second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Schindeldecker. All those in favor suspending the rules, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-058, and ordinance deappropriating funds and declared an emergency.
I'm sorry, Mr. Russell.
Move that council statutes rules be suspended, ordinance 2020-058 be given a second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-059, and ordinance repealing ordinance 2020-038 of the codified ordinances of the city of Finley, Ohio, and in its place, and asking this ordinance to accept bids as received and authorize the service director of the city of Finley, Ohio, to enter into a contractor contracts as required for the Ohio Department of Transportation, Aviation, Grant Airport Beacon and Linsaw Project number 35284600, and declared an emergency.
I got a question.
Mr. Hellman.
I can't find the write-up on that in here. Is this the one where the Federal Aviation Board is giving us the 10% that was supposed to be our match? Is that correct?
This one is actually fixing a Brian Oops. It has nothing, the funds have already been appropriated, the previous ordinance just was missing a couple words, so this is just...
Mr. Russell.
The, in the ordinance, it's actually stated correctly that it is repealing ordinance 2020-038, but in the agenda, it says it's repealing ordinance 2019-038. Just, I don't know if that's a big deal or not, regardless of what it's repealing, it ends in a 038, and because it's just fixing some minor wording issues, I would give the council's rules be suspended, ordinance 2020-059 be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Hellman. All those in favor of suspending the rules of council, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2020-060, and ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or the service director of the city of Finley, Ohio, to apply for the U.S. Department of Justice and if awarded, enter into an agreement or agreements for supplemental funding to be used for coronavirus-related costs and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move that council statute of rules be suspended, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six zero be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough, all those in favor of suspending the rules of council say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six zero, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six zero.
Mr. Wolfser.
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six zero.
Mr. Greenow, second, any discussion, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six one, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move that statute by council statute of rules be suspended, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six one be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, all those in favor of suspending the rules of council say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six one, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six one.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty zero six one.
Second, Mr. Hellman, any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six two, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six three, and ordinance accepting bids as received for the rehabilitate taxiway A, taxiway A four to A six, project number three five two nine three four zero zero, and declared an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Move the council statute of rules be suspended, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six three be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Slough, all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
And Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Rules are suspended, and the clerk will give the ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six three, ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six three.
Mr. Slough.
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero six three.
Second, Mr. Wolfser, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Slough.
Aye.
Ms. Warnakee.
Aye.
Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted. Old business. Mr. Wolfser.
Figure that this is where we need to take up the conversation then on strategic planning, I'd like to make the same motion that I made previously after the discussion of the committee report. Motion to accept the, um, scope of work and the offer of fifteen thousand dollars to start the first leg of the strategic plan for the city of Findlay, Ohio.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion. Mr. Hellman.
Jeff, does this include the fifteen thousand, does that, uh, include all the work that was proposed originally?
It includes all the work that is on the sheet in this, uh, report, it's what we discussed Dennis at our last meeting. I had sent that to, uh, Baker Tilly previously to give them a heads up, uh, to take a look at the revised scope that the mayor and the auditor and myself put together. And actually, that came from the meeting prior, the strategic planning committee meeting prior to that, when we cut out certain sections that we all agreed needed to be cut out at that point. So, we revised that down, scaled it down, and that's when Baker came back with the fifteen thousand dollar price.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, Tom, question for you, does the result of this, uh, vote mean that we, in essence, are, uh, passing or, or, or like trumping the committee report and then legislation would then follow that would make this appropriation? Or does this vote give, uh, the city enough what they need in order to go, go forward, not into this contract with Baker Tilly?
Uh, yeah, well, with the vote, you'd, you'd, uh, uh, trump the, uh, uh, report, but I think it's really something more for legislation probably.
But we've already have the budgeted amount, and it's been appropriated.
All the funds are appropriated?
Yes. We had a hundred thousand dollars for this engagement initially, we've scaled it back, and we're asking for fifteen, for the fifteen thousand for this year.
Well, if you don't want to pass it on, uh, without legislation, without legislation, you can, you can motion, you don't have to do everything by legislation, you've got the votes.
Currently, we have a motion and a second that basically says, Mr. Station.
Appreciate, uh, having to speak, I, I want to share a couple thoughts real quick. I, I believe Councilman Wolfser shared the documents that came from Baker Tilly with the entire body. One of them was work they had already started, uh, in good faith in working with the city, and a couple things were really interesting that were in there, but most importantly, and we've talked about this, it mentions in a write-up from Moody's that we have a weak fund, uh, five-year dollar change balance against our revenues, in other words, our funds are declining as a percentage of revenues. And that's a concern, that's been noted also by the state auditor. Also, it's been noted by the state auditor that our depreciation has increased significantly, and there is concern or it's a, it's a flag that needs to be discussed. That's something that's important, but more importantly here, if you haven't had a chance to fully review the document, the draft that was circulated with the legislation, I think there's a couple sentences that really jump out. One is that the purpose of this is to develop a rating matrix that outlines the client's economic, financial, managerial, and debt-related credit factors. Critical factors, particularly with regards to some of the money you're talking about, particularly in your utility funds. And the second sentence I think is worth pointing out is to provide project evaluation criteria to be utilized with the client's economic development projects and annexation projects. Such criteria will assist the city administration and this council in application, review, and approval of prospective economic development projects, but also annexations, which we have no process for, or no consideration of at this point. Also, to review the client's existing policies and procedures and methodology with regards to revenue and expense projections, debt management, and capital planning. What could be more important in the crisis, the pandemic crisis, the financial burden that's being put on the city right now? And then lastly, to discuss the purpose of the debt policy, reserve liquidity policy, as well as considerations for various debt-related factors which could be incorporated into those policy scopes. I think we would be hard-pressed on our own to come up with factors like that with the outside expertise that can be provided by Baker Tilly. And my last comment, because I am a hundred percent supporter of this, and a hundred percent in support of the fact that when you're in a crisis, you plan, plan, plan. And that is, you need to be aware that Baker Tilly is a fiduciary, a real solid fiduciary of the city of Findlay. And what that means is, they represent the interests of this community from West Park to the downtown, from Tiffin Avenue to the industrial parks. From fifteen south, where we have the retirement communities, all the way north to our corporate and industrial facilities. They have to give us an objective, third-party look that is beneficial for the entire city. I don't think you can get a better bang for your money or a more objective look from a company that has the credibility of working with communities that have done millions and millions and millions and billions of dollars of debt in the state of Ohio. They know what they're doing, and we couldn't have a better firm being willing to work with the number one metropolitan in the United States. I think they're getting well more than the dollars speak for.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Well, certainly fifteen thousand dollars is a lot, uh, more palatable figure than, uh, thought we were dealing with in the past. However, I still think we're putting the cart before the horse. I, my conception of a strategic plan was to plan for what we would like to see the city become, uh, in the future. Do we need a, do we need another parking garage in the downtown area? Some people have suggested that. If we do need a new parking garage, it might be a joint project between the city, perhaps the county, and perhaps, uh, the economic development department. Do we need a revised swimming pool, renewed swimming pool? Uh, if that's the case, it might involve city funds, it might involve, uh, recreation funds from the state of Ohio. It seems to me, uh, that the idea of strategic planning is to take a look at what we think we would like, and then, uh, look at the, uh, the way to finance it. I would rather engage an organization to help us with this strategic planning. Uh, take the swimming pool, for example, that's, uh, that's a typical one. Do we need to repair the one we have, do we need to build a new one? If we need to build a new one, where do we want to put it, do we want to have a water park? What communities of our size and, uh, so forth have been successful with a, a water park project, which ones have not? That was my idea, I would rather spend money on a consultant to help us with the strategic plans themselves, and then adapt the financing, and I have no idea, no doubt that perhaps this would be the company, uh, to do that. But I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse.
Mr. Hellman.
Tom, I, uh, concur with what you said, I believe that all along myself. However, I appreciate what Councilman Wolfser has done, uh, with the committee, and appreciate what, um, the auditor has just said. Two questions, I guess, um, one is to Councilman Wolfser, is it still the, if this were to move forward, is it still the intent of the committee and you to do the strategic planning piece, the physical development of the city as a, as a second phase?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, remember, we talked about the three, uh,
Three-legged stool?
Three legs of the stool, yes, and this is the first, and then, uh, we move into those, and actually, there, there is a possibility that if we so choose, uh, we could look to Baker to help us find the consultant that will do what Tom wants, which is to look at the cool things that we can build, uh, later on.
And I got the second question that I had, thanks, Jeff, um, goes to the mayor, uh, when we talked about this before, we had indicated that you, from an analogy standpoint, are the CEO of the, of this company called the city of Findlay, um, are you, do you concur with this recommendation and has been made in the discounted price that we are approaching?
Um, to be honest, I'm a little surprised that it's being brought up tonight, just 'cause I know we had kind of left it, um, I thought that we were all kind of all on the same page, um, so certainly, I think I, you know, still have the same opinion. Um, I think financial planning is essential to running any good organization, and I think that, um, I'm very supportive of doing that long-term. Unfortunately, I just don't think that right now is the appropriate time to be spending money on this, and the reason being is because I think, you know, yes, we have a couple of cautionary items, those have been around for a while, and we can certainly move forward on doing some of those things that have been identified internally. Um, I think that we are also in a, a strong financial position, and in many times are used as, uh, an example of the way to operate a city, especially on the financial side. And so I just think that right now, there are many other things that we should be putting our focus, energy, resources, and attention to. That I, I, this just wasn't a priority, but again, I'm happy to have the conversation, I guess my preference would be as if we're going to revisit this, that it goes back to the strategic planning committee, just because that's where we've been having the discussions. Um, and I think that that's the group that should kind of make a recommendation back to the committee as a whole. Um, but I think when we left the committee last, we said that we would hold off, kind of get our ducks in a row, talk about some of the big picture items that we wanted to see, and then be able to put the financial piece out later this year when we knew a little bit better what our economic state looked like, and then being able to go from there, looking at it next year. Um, this has been something that we, we've put up for quite a while, um, and so I don't understand the urgency at this moment.
Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I've, I've, a few thoughts on this, um. I, I echo Tom's, uh, statements that what strategic planning started as and then what it morphed into are two different things. And the committee has met for a year and a half or longer, working through gathering information, uh, letting this gel, working through to come to a place where we made a recommendation, we made a recommendation that said, the committee that has looked at this said, do not, do not go forward. Uh, admittedly, we got some, uh, additional information today about the price, but to me, regardless of the price, I, I don't believe this, this, at, at the most, you have the committee reconsider it at the second price, that's why we set up the strategic planning committee to look into it, to make the recommendation. So, the committee has made the recommendation, and now we're looking to basically say to the committee, it doesn't matter what you say, we're just going to go forward to it. So, that's one, but saying no to, to Baker Tilly in this, in this thing now doesn't say that it's not important, and it's not something we should do down the road. Uh, obviously, uh, financial strength of the city is extremely important, we can always, uh, be better, and Baker Tilly's helping us, is, is, is helping us along those lines. But the, the timing, as, as the mayor alluded to, as we get further in the fiscal year, the timing of doing this next year seems more appropriate. Uh, I don't believe that in the middle of, uh, a fire is the time to start planning, uh, how to design a fire exit, how to do, uh, the Gmail lock her planning. At the time of the, at the, during the fire, it's probably, it's probably a lousy time to do such strategic planning. So, I, I, I discount that, that this is a critical thing to do right now because of COVID. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at, so, for, for that, oh, oh, lastly, there was an alternative to Baker Tilly, and that was that the administration and the auditor would work towards, uh, moving us towards some of the, some of the common goals that we have, uh, for better fiscal management, uh, working with appropriations committee and, and Jeff. And I think that that, in light of the, in light of the budget situation, a budget situation where, uh, in new business, we'll talk about the, uh, city, the, the city council's budget board, s, you know, celebrating the success of saving three to five thousand dollars, uh, nationally to cities, uh, that it's a, the COVID situation makes it more appropriate to look at doing this internally, uh, and setting the front foundation for when it's a more appropriate time to engage a firm like Baker Tilly.
Mr. Wolfser.
I appreciate Councilman Russell's comments and Councilman Hellman's also. I think actually, we're doing this for the future, this is not something that's gonna, that, uh, we need to look at, I mean, that we're doing for today, because today, we've already taken care of. We are in the position of where we're at today because of, uh, the administration, previous administrations' decisions and previous councils' decisions that got us to having a general fund that carried over eight million dollar balance, that's going to allow us to care, to weather this storm, and hopefully relatively, uh, not too much pain and agony, and get us through this. However, the reason we need to put these, put this into place and get this process started is so that this will continue to happen in the future. Strategic planning is always about the future, it's about where we're going. You can never count on for sure that previous, or, or not previous, but future councils and future administrations will continue to make solid decisions. And, uh, the, these, this is the thing that will allow us to put in those guardrails that will make sure that the city will be able to continue to run like it's running today, which Councilman Russell is right. We are in good shape.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Can I get a clarification?
Okay, clarification, Mr. Hellman.
Yeah, what is the motion again?
To Baker Tilly and the, the scope of work that's on the, uh, that we got on the back of the
Okay, it was, it's not to send it back to the strategic planning committee?
It is not.
Okay, it's to prove the fifteen thousand dollars that proceed with the ordinance.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, those, those in favor of the motion say aye if your name is called, those opposed name.
Mr. Greenow.
Aye.
Mr. Haas.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Nay.
Mr. Schindeldecker.
Nay.
Mr. Slough.
Nay.
Ms. Warnakee.
Nay.
And Mr. Wolfser.
Aye.
The motion is defeated. Any other old business? New business, Mr. Russell.
We, I have received one and then now seen a second, uh, query from a citizen concerning the desire to rent the Hostel Building. Uh, we just passed legislation today, uh, about, uh, or consider, consider legislation today about, uh, leasing farmland, so this is something that we have obviously done. Uh, what I was bringing up, what I want to bring up here is, is council's thoughts on considering, uh, leasing the Hostel Building. And, uh, in conversations, uh, with the administration, it would be appropriate that if we were gonna lease the, the building, we would think about what permitted uses we would want to have there. Uh, so, just a general question to council at whole, what do you think about leasing, looking at leasing the Hostel Building, and if you would be in favor of considering that? Are there things that you would, uh, probably easier to say not want to see in there from a use standpoint?
What is zone?
Mr. Corbanyer left, I imagine, it's zone probably, uh, the, the downtown district, which would allow, allow office, uh, probably wouldn't, it would allow, allow office and, uh, you know, similar to what you see at, uh, um, at Deech Brothers, both, both, uh, the people who approach, arrived seeing one who approached me, and the other one who's interested, I've seen, were looking to do some kind of, uh, fitness or health club oriented, private, uh, oriented type, uh, uh, businesses there.
Mr. Slough.
Well, I, I certainly think, uh, I think that's a great idea. However, um, I would want to make sure that, uh, that there would be other opportunities for individuals if we decided we were gonna do that. I, I, I wouldn't be surprised, of course, I have no way of knowing this, but, uh, with Deech's right there, I didn't know if they might want to expand their business somehow. Uh, so, if, if, if this body decides that they want to do something, that it should be open up to the public to decide if they want an opportunity to go in there.
Mr. Russell.
I, I think that if, if council would be interested in pursuing this, uh, it would go out to bid in a similar manner that we go out to bid with the farmland, and, uh, we would accept, we, we would somehow, you know, accept bids, and I would assume that it would turn, go and include somehow terms of use. Um, and obviously, um, Deech Brothers, uh, would have an opportunity to, uh, uh, to make a, to offer a bid as for anybody else.
Mr. Haas.
I'm with C two, general commercial district. Zone commercial, C two. I, you know, I don't know what is currently being used, but administration would have to I, you know, I don't know what is currently being used, but administration would have to come to console with its current use.
Well, if, oh, sorry, if we would want to pursue it, Don, would we just have to council put in a request for legislation? And how would you see this proceeding? And at some point in time, there also has to be a conversation about permitted use, or about what usage we would allow there. A lot of discussion about usage, any restrictions that you want to put up? And, you know, not necessarily limit yourself, but there's going to be, have to be some regulation on what goes in there. So, and that'd be a good proposal, and we would best, best bid.
Any other, oh, Mayor, you're here. You.
I was just going to say, if this is something that council is interested in, I'm sure that there are other communities that have put similar properties out to bid. We can certainly find some and send examples of similar legislation. And then if interested, we can certainly move that forward.
Mr. Wilbsir.
A quick announcement on Raised Bar Hancock County. You all may be aware that the mayor and I sit on the board of directors of that, the Raised Bar. Is it, just to tell you what it is, I have to read this, I apologize, I can never cite this out of memory. Raised Bar is a workforce partnership of education, business, social services, and community leaders focused on aligning and integrating the Hancock County Ohio Community Learning System. And really what the organization is set on is helping kids to get a good idea of what they want to do as a career earlier in their education system than waiting until they get to be a senior in high school. There's a lot of things that go along with this. The reason I bring this up is we have a new manager that was announced earlier this week, it was in the paper. Tricia Velasse is the new manager. She comes to us from the University of Finley, where she was a co-founder of the Center of Civic Engagement. And she replaces Lori Zadonik, who was with us for four, three and a half, four years, and Lori has moved on to work at, with Marathon's Foundation.
Mr. Greeno.
Yeah, I'd like to, we're going to have a water and sewer meeting on Thursday, May 21st at 4:30, and that will be a Zoom meeting.
That's a great tie-in. I had mentioned to Mr. Greeno, Councilman Greeno, earlier, as a, I guess, unintended result of strategic planning not going forward, I mentioned to that committee, you folks will see a lot more of me this year. And the first thing that I need to speak with you about is the fact that the water fund, its unappropriate cash balance, and I know you all can't see this very well, went from a peak of almost $10 million a few years ago to just over $2 million this year. That being said, that is significantly below what would be considered a best practice by about any measure. I mentioned this, and currently, a minimum, a minimum balance would be $4 million. So you're significantly below that amount. That being said, I'd like to request to be able to go to next month's Water and Sewer Committee meeting to begin to discuss around the topic of minimum balance, funding, capital, equipment, restricted account in the sewer, for the, excuse me, for water, discuss possibly creating one and move forward. So the water fund, what concerns me the most about it is we aren't even halfway through the year, and our balance is that low. And we need to monitor the sewer expenditures as well, because that will drop very quickly also. So we keep a track on that, and in the submitted revenues that I submitted to the county, there were downward adjustments to the water fund based on current collections. Nothing dramatic, nothing so urgent to address as your current cash balance, your water fund.
Mr. Russell.
Well, back to the Hostel building, we talked, but I don't know what we decided. I didn't get a, I heard from a person or two that said it sounded like something worth pursuing. If people were nodding their head, would they say yes, that that's something we should look at going forward? Or not?
About all those in favor, raise your hand. Anybody proposing that?
Is it worth an ad hoc committee, or is it just something that the administration can work with and we can get to a point where we can see about moving this to a, any ability to bid it?
I question if you could put it on the agenda of appropriations committee also.
The bad thing about the face mask is, Jeff, I can't see if what your reaction was.
I would say no, it's not an appropriation. I mean, we're not talking about sending money to it, or taking money away from it, in this case.
I understand that. Mayor, you're here.
I was going to say, I think what would maybe be beneficial is, this seems like maybe this would be a good topic for strategic planning. I'd be happy to put together some collective information from other communities and send something out, and then maybe schedule that group for early June to discuss. Certainly, obviously, all council members are always welcome at all committee meetings. That was all I was going to recommend.
I know the timing, one of the parties who addressed me was end of the, like, August timeframe or something. So we want to see something relatively quick and then have the ability to get out to bid. Maybe just better with administration working and discussion with interested council reps. And then just coming back to council with some thoughts, and then we can move forward our legislation to enter into a bid.
Mr. Wilbsir.
I agree with Councilman Russell. I guess, I'm trying to, I don't see where this is really much different than the lease of the farm property. We put together a bid, we bid it out, somebody wants to rent it from us, or whatever the bid amount is, but then we can decide if we want to do that or not. Obviously, it's a building, it's not proct, it's not farmland, it's a little bit different in that regard, but the basic process should be the same.
Mr. Slough.
I guess I'm in agreement with councilmen. And I think one thing we need to come up with is a group of parameters that we're willing to do to make that property inhabitable by a business. Now, if they're going to do the construction and the fix-up, that's fine, but if the city's going to do it, we need to have everything, in my opinion, spelled out.
Mr. Hellman.
Grant, were you suggesting, when you say working with the administration on that process, is that similar to an ad hoc committee that would consider the suggestions that Councilman Slough made? And include the mayor and the attorney?
We could build that way, I think that administration, kind of echoing on Jeff's view of it, the administration can probably do it just as well as an ad hoc committee of council with a lot lower overhead. You know, council's view of it would be what we think representing the people, or the citizens, what we find is an acceptable use of it, but for the details of, you know, the build out of the building, I don't know that council brings that much expertise or value to the process. I kind of shy away, personally, I shy away from an ad hoc. I think the administration would probably handle it better.
So if I correct, I just want to correct, there's been a lot of conversation that there's not been a request for an ad hoc.
No.
Second, that the administration will come with a recommendation or a worksheet that'll show you what's going on, and then the council will consider that, and then could take it to committee if necessary. Is that what I heard?
Any other new business? Mr. Russell.
Following last, our last meeting on May 6th, I sent an email to council talking about some budgetary items for city council, and was looking for feedback on that. I received one reply about it. If, is this a topic of interest to anyone in council, or should we just proceed forward with those recommendations and look towards deappropriating?
Mr. Wilbsir.
I think, I don't know, Grant, I sent back the letter, and my only concern with all the suggested cuts in there was making sure that we had enough money to take care of the electronics that we needed to update to do what we're doing now, and do this on a going-forward basis. And I don't know if we need to look at, you know, we've stopped looking at the opportunity to have these meetings virtually, you know, we've made a decision not to do that. I'm not so sure that we shouldn't go back and revisit that, just in case enough situation arises that we should, that we need to, if there's another spike in the pandemic situation, I don't know. We're doing it with other meetings, but we're not doing it with this one. And so that would be my only concern with the budgetary cuts, is to make sure that we've got enough money in there to get those things done, which are very specific to this timeframe.
Mr. Russell.
Mayor, is there a process that the administration is going through? These would be budget changes that we can just simply be another input into? I see Dave Beach there with the courts, I'm sure they're looking at it in a similar manner, and that we can roll into your process.
At this point, I would request that you guys do a separate deappropriation request, just because we're going to probably kind of move through that in phases, but certainly just for timing sake. I know that you guys need to make a couple of larger changes. So I would say just go ahead and do that. To Councilman Wilbsir's comments, I will confirm, but I believe all of the equipment and everything to be able to continue streaming our meetings at least is in place and has already been expended, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Are we looking at getting the Zoom accounts so that we can host our own Zoom meetings versus borrowing from various community partners?
Why, we've got all these great people, let them use their account. That has not been something that we have further looked into. I know that initially it looks appealing. The concern is obviously that when you have larger numbers of people, the sticker price may look low at first, but when you are trying to have the thresholds that we would want to make sure we have, it gets pricey pretty quick. And we want to make sure that, obviously, because we haven't had a whole lot of folks reaching out concerned, we have it available for streaming, we are making those changes. I think it's certainly, we can keep some money set aside, and now that we've kind of got their information and could get it up and running pretty quickly, it does hurt to have that money there. But it's up to you guys, we have not continued to pursue that from my side.
Mr. Wilbsir.
Mayor, I think that, I understand what you're saying about the Zoom account. With the number of people that we have that might want to be involved, it could be very pricey, very.
Correct, yes.
However, when we look at this meeting specifically, when we're, we could really just focus on council members, administration members that would want to be here, or want to take part in the meeting, but could not be present physically. We'd still be abiding by the laws that have been given to us by the state. Is there a way that we could do that without having Zoom involved, or having Zoom involved at a lower amount that keeps us within a decent price range? So if somebody's not feeling well, they shouldn't be here amongst us.
Right, yes, do not come if you are ill.
Understood, but they still need to take part.
We could look at making some adjustments. I have not explored that much. Again, it just goes back to making sure that you have good sound quality, good consistent connection. That's one of my biggest concerns with the Zoom, is that as soon as one person drops off, you have to completely stop the meeting and wait until they rejoin. So if somebody's having a bad internet day, that could be a problem. So we can certainly touch base and send you guys back some more options, but we have not pursued Zoom much more.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Russell.
One last one, and this is a lot lighter. Last Friday was the last day of Elaine being at Main Street Deli. For 25 years, she has been a true Philly jamaican. And I first ran into Elaine serving food for Gus Mac way back when. And it always seemed that whenever there was something in Philly going on and they needed food, Elaine would somehow involve. And she says evidently, it always said 25 years she was going to look at doing something else, and she did 25 years, and now she's going to do something else. And it is a loss for the city of Finley, and for all those folks who've loved her great food, although I understand it's going to continue, and I just say a Godspeed to Elaine.
On a personal note, I was, her second customer, Jim Thomas and I went in there, introduced ourselves, and we never left, right? It just seems like I've been there for 25 years. She's downtown, I don't want to call her a relic, because 25 years ago I was a relic. But yeah, she'll be said in this.
Mayor, you're here.
Wonderful, we certainly covered a lot today, and a lot of the items have actually been brought up. So one, I'll do it at the beginning rather than at the end, the census is still going on, so please complete it if you have not. We are currently at about 70%, which is six points ahead of the state of Ohio's average, as well as about 10 points ahead of the country, so let's keep it up. Did they even have any questions on the census? The other item I wanted to mention related to income tax, I know the auditor mentioned that, and that there was a little bit of difference with the auditor's projections being a little bit higher. I'm going to just go ahead and, it's been exciting to kind of watch that, I know we were projecting that we were going to see steep declines. I would attribute a lot of that to the payment protection program that was implemented following Andrew's projections. And so that has been a great thing, we have not seen the decline in the income tax revenues that we were expecting. As of today, down about 11% total. So overall, projections are still coming in pretty well, and we are getting a weekly report that's being shared with a number of folks, including the auditor and Councilman Wilbsir, so I'm certainly happy to share that with all of you. If you want to see the weekly numbers, I have to say, guys, I'm pretty disappointed there was not more excitement around deappropriating for the funds from the salt farm. I was expecting some woo-hoo's, but, you know, you might call me tired, that's fine. And then the auditor actually brought it up, which is great. As I mentioned earlier, Brian and I have been talking about making sure that we're looking at all of our different funds, and that we're working on making sure we have five-year projections and tying in all those pieces to the puzzle that we've been doing over the last couple of years to make sure that we are portraying and giving you guys a complete picture of the operations and how things are being managed. So Brian was gracious enough, utility billing department pulled together our revenue here today, because I know some folks were asking about if we have seen decreases in our revenue for our water and sewer. So we are only down from prior year less than 1%. So our revenues are continuing to come in strong, we aren't seeing a lot of people, you know, defaulting or anything like that, pretty consistent, but we are pulling and monitoring that pretty closely to make sure that we're not missing that. And then we're always continually working on making sure we are capturing any lost revenue and lost water. And we should have a report hopefully next council meeting on some of the things that we were doing that should increase our revenue in those areas, which should be great. I know Councilman Hellman kind of mentioned it, but just wanted to reiterate that the FAA is going to be giving us, covering our match on some grants. And so that has saved the city about $20,000 on a capital project. This is not wanting to stay up anymore. I need a bigger nose to hold it up. So as you saw, we're continuing to watch and figure out all the funding opportunities that are coming out, speaking regularly with state and federal officials to understand the CARES Act and the HEROES Act proposals, and making sure that we're taking advantage of that. Certainly, there's a lot of great opportunities to use those dollars, but also understanding that fortunately, we have not had the huge impact on COVID. that fortunately we have not had, um, the huge impact on, on COVID-related expenses. Um, so anytime there is funding available that we can help put into other areas to help make up some of that revenue loss that we've seen, um, we're trying to do that. But, um, overall, I've been happy with kind of how, how things have been trending and we're keeping a close eye on that. And I'll continue to reiterate, if you guys have questions or there's specific information you want to see with us, please do not hesitate to reach out. Councilman Hellman, uh, mentioned it earlier, you all are the board of directors of the city, um, and we are here to help execute the vision and to make sure that the operations are running efficiently and effectively and being wise stewards. Um, so if you have questions and information that you think would be beneficial to share, uh, don't hesitate to reach out. I think we've already covered everything else. Does anybody have any questions for me? Oh, Memorial Day. I wanted to make sure I mentioned, um, I'm sure you all saw that the Memorial Day parade has been canceled, which is very disappointing, but obviously, um, when we have that many people crowding together, um, that's not advised right now, goes against the governor's, um, mass gathering, um, recommendation. And so we wanted to make sure that we're keeping folks safe. However, I've been working with, um, the Defense Service Office and, and WFANWKSA and a couple of other local organizations to make sure that we are still able to recognize and provide the memorial service that our military members who fell, you know, serving our country are honored appropriately. So I'm really excited, we have a program that's going to run from 9:00 AM to a little before 9:30 on Memorial Day. It'll be, um, live streamed on our website, um, just as people are gonna be able to watch the council meetings here as well as over the radio. And we'll have a full kind of memorial service that's being pre-recorded and then it's gonna end with a community-wide moment of silence at 9:30. So even if you don't catch the program, please participate in the moment of silence. You'll be asked to go out either onto your porch or onto your sidewalk, um, all gather together for about a minute, well, not gathering together, staying apart, but in spirit together at 9:30 AM. And then we, uh, we're gonna sound the tornado sirens and our, um, law enforcement officers and folks are gonna sound their sirens to kind of signal the end of that countywide, but a great way to just kind of keep it in mind on what the day is about. It's not a big celebration, it's a memorial and we can do that without, um, the excitement and, and things, but still recognizing and thanking those who paid the ultimate sacrifice. So I hope you all will participate in that. Any other questions?
Just my memory, uh, that you sang the Star Spangled Banner last year at the beginning of that.
I did, because the other person didn't show up. But I won't be doing that this year. We, we had a much better group, um, that will be singing, so I'm really excited to have it all come together, so I hope you guys enjoy. Thank you.
Uh, new business, any further? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Slough, second, Mr. Hellman, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye. Any opposed? You can stay if you're opposed.
Mr. Hellman, you didn't say aye.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Actually, a lot of business.
Drew a lot of stuff tonight.
Yeah.
Brian? Glad we, that's a great meeting.